Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm going to play you the twenty second. Good? What do you think, Alan?
Recording in progress.
All to order, the regular meeting of the Riedel City Council, roll call please.
Mayor Lawrence.
Assets next to you.
Mayor for Tim Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Orr.
Here.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Woodall.
Here.
Please rise. At legislature's, the letter of the United States of America and the Republic of America's one nation. Okay, public presentations. This is the time for a group to address the council on a matter on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, dialogue with the county or staff is not allowed under the Health and Brown Act. Items requiring council action not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a finding is made by at least two thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Where they'd like to make a public comment. Do we have any hands raised? Do we have any emails? Hearing none, I will close public presentations. Consent calendar, would any member of the council wish to move something from the consent calendar? No? No? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Woodall and second by Orr, please vote. You have two buttons pressed down on your buttons, I think, mine is like that. There we go. Okay. Okay, moving on to staff for work, President Communications, page one thirty eight in our packets, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Carter, members of the council. So the city has been fielding a number of questions from the state of California related to our Can Street wastewater line upsize project. That is good news as we dive into some of the, you know, prior audits of the city and financial data. That means that they're taking a very close look at this particular project. They generally don't do that unless there's going to be some sort of positive news at the end of that process. They're just doing their due diligence and we have gone through that process also with the water, the capital improvement plan project, which obviously went through, so we're looking forward to that. Staff met with representatives of Pacific Gas and Electric to discuss their progress towards the additional electrical capacity by the end of 2024. And according to PG&E, everything appears to be on target, so possibly by the middle of 2024, there will be additional capacity on the grid, so there should be limited to no impact to development related to electricity. Your city manager also discussed with the Red Bull Coast Energy Authority a new DC fast charging brand and potential locations here in Riedel, both public, city control areas, including City Hall, Morgan Park, and others, as well as some private locations for potential sites, of course. In this case, the DC fast charger, you can't just necessarily place it anywhere. It has to be pretty adjacent to some of the high capacity transmission lines, of which City Hall is, City Hall and Davis Street are next to it. So that's good news and we're hoping to continue following up on that. The DC fast chargers are obviously the superchargers that can quickly, you know, within thirty minutes or so recharge a vehicle, so might have some people pull off the red just for that. With that, I will return it to the council to see if there's any comments or questions for staff. Your staff.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Orr, any comments or questions?
None, no question.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, just, City Manager, is PG&E going to give us a letter of some sort saying that they will supply the electricity by the that they told you.
So the city would not be recipient of such a letter, it would be the individual applicants and developers.
Well, you know, is there anybody, you said it was a commitment from PG&E that they would be able to supply the the grid and certainly supply it.
So, yeah, they're not going to put anything into writing and so on that. However, we have seen them out at the transformer and switch station here doing some work. And they happen to meet with so many other representatives, unfortunately, I cannot talk about the progress in those jurisdictions and I have not heard any concerns other than obviously in the Riverdale area, as to any progress, so.
Just because they're working on a substation doesn't mean you get a necessary increase in the power. They could be, they could be doing anything over there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I would feel more comfortable as we had some kind of, PG&E said, yes, we will be able to supply even if they have to put a finite number on it. They can work anyways, they can, we can supply their customers, put in the city. And so you can show that to potential people that want to develop their because some of those people that were up on the plateau, I understand, was that they received letters to serve from PG&E previously and then they didn't get those, that's what the people that came here and did call the comment, that were owners, committed to us.
So what I can do is I can forward on a request for a special letter and see what responses.
Appreciate that, thank you. That's all for the questions, I'll go.
Thank you, Councilmember Woodall, any comments or questions? Just one comment, our staff is really good. I saw that this these last two weeks and I appreciate that, I appreciate y'all, the work you guys are doing. That's all in. Yes, thank you, and I would like to echo that sentiment, there's been a lot going on. So I thank you all very much. Beyond that, I have no further questions, so if any members of the public have questions, comments for city staff. Any hands raised or emails? No? Okay. Moving on to special presentations, we have the presentation on the fiscal year 2023, 2024, recommended budget, page one forty three, in our packets, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Carter, members of the council. I just want to, you know, also thank our finance director, Travis Samuel, for all the work that he's been doing to get this budget into place. And I will hand it over directly to Travis, thank you.
Thanks, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor Proton Carter and fellow members of the city council. On May sixteenth, the council received a presentation of the recommended budget, organization chart, summary of capital and special projects, and the budget counter. The proposed budget totals eight point seven seven million, split between operating expenditures, debt service, and capital and special projects. Revenues for the upcoming fiscal year are projected to be seven point five eight million, with approximately one point two million coming from the use of unassigned funders balances. The budget process begins in early March when budget worksheets are compiled and distributed to department heads. In April, department heads return budget requests to be compiled by finance and the initial draft of the recommended budget is prepared by the finance department for the city manager's approval. In May, a special study session was held with the council and each fund was discussed and reviewed for the upcoming fiscal year, in addition to budgeted city staffing and anticipated capital costs. The month of June offers staff to present the recommended budget for adoption for the upcoming fiscal year. At the May sixteenth city council meeting, the council identified five central priorities for the fiscal year 2023, 24. Recruitment and retention, public works infrastructure, community development, economic development plan, and public safety and the staffing needs of that department. During the special study session, the council and staff identified the following changes to the draft budget. A twenty-five thousand dollar split between sewer and water operations fund to prepare a summer GIS intern. We adjusted the part-time public works utility worker position to a full-time benefit position, the difference being extended to the water operations fund. Per-rated benefits were added to the police department's records technician position. Thirty-two thousand dollars has been added to the sewer operations fund budget to complete the NPDES permit renewal. And finance staff adjusted the insurance premiums based on the score forecast. The recommended city budget for fiscal year 2023, 24 is eight point seven seven million, a two percent decrease from the prior year, mainly due to reduction in capital and special project expenses. The two largest budgeted activities in the projected budget are grant capital projects, approaching nearly two point six million, and the police department budget, covered almost exclusively by the general fund, at one point three seven million. City revenues are estimated to be seven point five eight million for fiscal year 2023, 2024, or six percent less than fiscal year 22, 23. Two of the largest revenue sources, the Bradley Burns retail sales tax and the local Measure J sales tax, are projected to decrease due to local, state, and national economic uncertainties. The water and sewer funds were established in the most recent water rate study completed in two thousand and two for revenue and expense projections. The general fund is the city's primary operating fund. Revenues are available for general purchases and are used to fund the city's operations, including police services, general operations, and management of city services, as well as special and capital projects. Appropriations to the general fund are budgeted at one point nine five million in the upcoming fiscal year. Police services are budgeted for one point two million, or sixty-two percent of the total general fund cost, while capital projects and city administration costs are anticipated to account for ten point one and thirteen point nine percent of the budget respectively. The general fund is predominantly supported by property taxes, property tax and lieu of vehicle license fees, sales tax, and canvas taxes. General fund revenue projections for the upcoming fiscal year are one point six three million, a decrease of about a hundred and thirty thousand, or seven percent from the previous fiscal year. This is primarily due to lower sales and canvas tax projections for the upcoming year. The fiscal year 2023, 24 capital projects budget includes three point six million in capital and special projects. The capital and special projects are budgeted to be appropriated from the general fund, the first part capital fund, or what will be the dog part, the parks capital fund, which includes the Eel River Trail and the Gateway Deterfication Project, sponsored by Clean California Grants, the ARCA funding, which is a COVID relief revenue from the general government, or from the federal government, and sewer and water capital costs. Budgeted capital project costs are sixteen percent less than last fiscal year.
What's your thought on that?
Budgeted capital and project costs. There are twenty-five point six five budgeted full-time employees for fiscal year 2023, 24, which is an increase of less than one full-time employee year over year. I would like to thank the city council for their participation in the budget process and their continued commitment to fiscal responsibility for the city of Riedel. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the city of Riedel's staff and their support in building the budget for the fiscal year. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Travis. I will start with Councilmember Woodall, do you have any questions?
Let's go with the slow ones, yeah. The bio-towel of tent roof repair and replacement, are you going to do repair or replacement, just out of curiosity, but.
That's true, it is, and basically we have manufactured recommendation for the prepared that we've recently could be repaired and that's to say that substantially, or be a positive difference that it is for.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Wilson, any questions regarding the budget?
Yeah, my is on the sewer, I'm not sure which page I was, it was the one on the individual one, it was, but it looked to me like kind of the last three years, each year the sewer's been increasing by about a hundred thousand dollars per year, is that going to fall that correctly?
You know, it is pretty close to that. Yeah, it looks like it's about the past few years, about a hundred thousand dollars, and that has a lot to do with salary and benefit costs increasing over the last few years, as well as chemical costs increased substantially over the past years as well, so that trend is active.
So is that, is that something you anticipate going forward to consistently grow by a hundred thousand a year, or is it, I realize that probably half of that is salary, I think, you know, if I looked at that correctly, I I don't have detail on that.
Yeah, significant, of course, and the sewer operations budget salary.
Because we aren't looking to do another, I think we're about due to do another salary review, is that?
No, we did one in, I want to say twenty twenty-one, and so the and then in addition to that, we also did enhancements in preparation for the, you know, inflation. So some of these numbers may be a little front-loaded, but moving forward, we did conduct a rate study on the water and wastewater budget. And so while we're going to see a decline in the water portion of your water and wastewater bill over the next four or five years, you're going to see the increase really come through on wastewater. So wastewater is projected to increase and that's part of what we did with the, with the water and wastewater rate studies and to try to correct any revenue issues coming going into wastewater.
So when's our next rate study, we still about four years out?
We're still about four years out, so we did that, maybe it was just last year, the time is getting away from me, but but we did just recently do a rate study where there will be some, you know, adjustments ongoing over the next five years. And then the standard really is every five years you touch base, do another rate study, see if you're on track, and follow accordingly, so.
Well, part of the reason for asking this is that but it looked at like reserves went down, considerable, not so much water, but in wastewater department. And so we're, I know the other, I know other agencies are doing this, they've gone through, the ones that I'm involved with anyway, and the other ones that, my personal are doing stuff with wages considerably because everybody's competing for the pool of help. And then there's some, like, some of the agencies, they can do it remotely, so they're, they're acting, I don't think, I don't think we're facing that. But anyhow, the wage situation is going to continue to increase and we're already seeing a decrease in our reserve as a result of increasing costs of this sewer or wastewater. And so that, you know, I don't expect to answer and solve those questions tonight, but I'm just saying that it's put a red flag to me that that's, we're headed somewhere we don't want to be headed at this time today.
Yeah, and so in those water and wastewater rates, there is, you know, adjustments of about a five percent a year for salary and benefit costs, so certainly traditionally and I think continuing ongoing, you're going to see some of the benefit costs continue to escalate, mostly in medical insurance related costs, which generally seem to only ever go up. And as the finance director mentioned earlier, are some of our insurances, our general liability insurances are continuing to increase. And so there is fixed into the rates and into that rate study is, is you know, a five percent annual increase to help cover those ongoing operational expenses, including salary benefits, operating costs, which hopefully should have spread over a five-year period match the increase in the inflation and costs.
Because that is, by the way, they're going six percent, five and six percent, seven percent, on some of the other rates you can see. So and that's per year, we go back into ours per year, but.
Yeah, I will say maybe one of the deficits of the water and wastewater studies, it was done before, really it became apparent that there was going to be significant inflation. And so I think, I don't think we necessarily need to react immediately right now, or maybe not even next year, but to watch the trends and if we need to make an adjustment to, you know, make that call, you know, to make a, make an adjustment before the end of five-year period. If we need to do that, we can come back to the council and talk to the council about that.
Appreciate that, it's just a, it's a concern and also I know it's complimentary that you really bring our budget below what it was, and you order it, which is good. I know I'm on the common, and it is, I know a lot of went into this, trying to make this fit with the sales tax and using revenue that we pulled back, but I still have those reasons, so thank you.
If I could just add one more thing. The city is, is in a good position in terms of having reserves to help cushion the blow so that there is, you know, hopefully potentially a quick turnaround in the economy. But, you know, the reserves bias time to really, you know, analyze and be in a safe place to, to make the best long-term decisions for the city. That includes the water, wastewater, and in the general, we still have adequate operating reserves and room for, you know, for the unexpected to happen.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Orr. Any questions or comments about the budget?
No questions, Michael.
Thank you, and I have more questions, though, we don't need to vote. None at this time, we'll come back at the next meeting for the official adoption if everyone was good. Okay, so with that, I just want to say thank you to Travis and to city staff, I know that budgeting can be painful, and beyond that, I appreciate you boiling it down such simple, colorful things, pictures. So thank you for that. Any questions or comments from members of the public about the budgets? Any hands raised, any emails? Thank you. Moving on then to ordinances, special resolutions, and public hearings. This will be the second reading by title only and adoption of ordinance number three nine eight dash two zero two three, amending chapter ten point zero five, use of streets for storage of vehicles, pro, get it, page one sixty-three, our packets. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Carter and members of the council. I believe Kevin Caldwell is on the line, it'd be to fall asleep during the presentation. And I will turn it over to him, Kevin, you will have the, I'm here, by hitting star of six, I believe. There you go.
All right, thank you very much, Mayor Proton, members of the council. This is the second reading and adoption of ordinance number three ninety-eight dash two zero two three. And it is amending cities' parking regulations. This was brought to your council at the request of the community services officer, the nuisance committee, and the traffic committee. If you flip to page one sixty-four of your packet, you can see the changes, the not substantial, but the are important changes to the parking regulations. We expanded the definition, or at least the application to not just vehicles, but we've expanded the trailers, recreational vehicles, and boats. The second bullet, item number two, we've actually increased, or actually added some language, that vehicles would have to be moved more than three hundred feet from the current position or place on the street in order to avoid any additional enforcement. And then bullet number three basically says if it's not moved within three hundred feet, we can have that vehicle towed pursuant to the California Vehicle Code. They are simple, but we believe effective minor revisions to the parking regulations. And with that, if there were no questions from members of the council, members of the public, I would recommend that your council approve ordinance number three ninety-eight dash two zero two three, amending the parking regulations as just discussed and as identified in your packet tonight. Again, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the council may have or members of the public may have.
Okay, thank you so much, I will turn it over to questions, let's call Councilmember Orr, first question to come is on the parking ordinance.
No, that one's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Good. Councilmember Woodall?
Maybe we've worked on that.
Yes, we did, I have no questions, I do want to say that I am a fan of this, I think that we've got some safety hazards around town, blind burns, and lots of kids who like to play in the streets sometimes, and yeah, so getting the votes in the trailers off the streets, I think, will be a big difference, and I appreciate giving another tool to our police department, so. Okay, with that, do I have a motion to accept the staff recommendation, approve and adopt ordinance number three nine eight dash two zero two three, amending the section ten point zero five point five three zero, parking and storage of vehicles on streets?
I'm just motion.
Motion by Woodall, I have a second. Second by Wilson, vote please. Vote here is, so.
No, it'll take thirty days to go into, yes, thirty days to go.
Thirty days? Okay, with that, we will move on to the council of arts and communications, you have the member Woodall, you're up.
Yes, I'm on the transit board meeting tomorrow. And on Thursday, I opened the board of directors of the fire department meeting. And that's about it, okay.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yeah, I have the Thursday, H C F A D, off the giving us that.
That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Orr.
Attended the H C B meeting, they had a few presentations, one's on the wind power plant, they're looking at putting offshore up there, they basically gave the powers that be the power to act and act for the county and that, not approving anything, but act as a single point of reference for that. They mentioned that they're working on getting a hydrogen powered bus to meet the needs of the the transit link from here down to the Bay Area, and they talked about putting hydrogen powered refueling back throughout the county, which is pretty cool, I think. And they also had a presentation from Caltrans and the county on the ideas to deal with the homeless situation, one of them that they offered up that a few people are taking are making use of is the offer of waste management, to put trash collection sites at the temporary encampments and they will come and empty them. As long, they won't clean up the area, but as long as the people clean up the area, they'll come and empty those containers and try and keep there.
The deterfication, walkability, and riot community this past Friday, so we are tentatively working on a volunteer community cleanup day.
we are tentatively working on a volunteer community cleanup day, uh, that will be hosted by the resource center. Uh, we're looking at Saturday, July twenty ninth from nine to eleven A M. And that is just a group of volunteers who fill up picking up trash and pulling weeds. And we actually do have people interested in that, including you and me. So, um, so that is something to look forward to, it's right before a while of the day, so we figure it's like you clean up the house and bring it up pretty, you know, make it look nice. Um, so we will bring that back to our next meeting when, um, you know, the next few meetings, when that date approaches a little closer. The next meeting of that committee will be July seventh at nine A M. The chamber commerce met on the same Friday, so there are two things there. The, uh, Scotty Live, uh, Scotty Live, the thanks for nonprofits event, the third Friday of every month. And in July, the recipient will be the Riedel Social Chamber Commerce. So that is July twenty first from five to eight P M. If you simply go on over and have a nice evening at the Scotty Live, a portion of the proceeds will be go right to our chamber commerce, which is wonderful. Bike review. We're having a bike review of the fire department on the seventeenth. And that is from eleven A M to one P M, any more details about that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Well, I'm gonna be there, I've got streamers for my bike now. It's for kids, not for adults, but I'm still gonna do that. Um, and with that, I think that is about it.
Oh, we're also doing the cleanup this Friday at the, um, community garden.
Oh, yeah, so volunteer cleanup, do you have time for that?
I know it was gonna be later in the afternoon. It was gonna be in the afternoon.
I, I can't remember the time now. No. But you never just know, Sarah Rebecca at the Riedel Community Resource Center, cause she is there a whole lot of times over there. Uh, but yeah, good to know, reviving that community garden over there.
Yes.
That's, that's good stuff.
Volunteer.
Yes, wonderful. Okay.
What, what weekend was the Scotty Live?
Uh, I got that for you, that will be Friday, July twenty first from five to eight P M, the chambers putting in some work on it, you know, I think that's a little, you know.
That's, that's in the room dinner.
Yeah, and it's a pint, so it's like, uh, you know, any beer that you buy, or, you know, a portion of the proceeds go to the Riedel Social Chamber.
July what?
Uh, twenty first, from five to eight P M. And I think I plan to be there for that as well. Any other questions or comments on things happening? Okay, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I still move.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, meeting adjourned for our next, for your meeting, so we on two things you have one, yes, that's it, very good, thank you all.